Good morning, everyone. I appreciate your patience while we get things started. Today is September 16th, 2025. There's a quorum present. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Item number two on today's agenda is to convene as the Story County Board of County Commissioners, and here we are. On to item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. If you can all stand and join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. On to item number four is public comment. Public comment is welcomed at the beginning and end of each meeting. These comments should be limited to matters not on today's calendar or agenda. Public comment is again welcomed after each item on the agenda, and those comments should be limited to the agendized topic. As a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per individual. With that said, is there anybody in the courtroom today that has some public comment for us? All right, not seeing any. We're going to move right along to item number five. I know you weren't ready for this, Commissioner. Are you ready to read those motions? Okay. All right, on to item number five, discussion for possible action, consideration and possible approval of the agenda for September 16th, 2025. County Manager, are there any changes?
There is recommended change to move number 11, that is a fire district item, to October 7th, county commission meeting here, actually county board of fire commissioners meeting. And then also, that would affect number 10 and 12, just so you're aware, as far as convening to different boards, but number 11 is the action item.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioner Gillman, do you have any questions or comments about the agenda today?
I do not.
All right. Is there any public comment regarding the agenda and the items contained within? Not seeing any. Commissioner Gillman, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a, Commissioner Gillman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda for September 16th, 2025, meeting with changes discussed.
All right, there's a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Onto item number six, discussion for possible action, consideration and possible approval of minutes from the July 15th, 2025 meeting. Commissioner Gillman, any questions or comments about those minutes?
None, thank you.
All right, how about public comment? Not seeing any. Commissioner Gillman, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve minutes from August 15th, 2025 meeting.
July 15th, sorry.
Yeah, it's July, July, sorry. July 15th.
No problem. There's a motion, I'll second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Onto item number seven, discussion for possible action, consideration and possible approval of the minutes from the August 5th, 2025 meeting. Commissioner Gillman, any questions or comments on those?
None, thank you.
All right, how about public comment? Not seeing any. Commissioner Gillman, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the August 5th, 2025 meeting.
All right, there's a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Onto item number eight is today's consent agenda. Commissioner Gillman, any questions or comments about that?
None, thank you.
All right, how about public comment on the consent agenda? All right, not seeing any. Commissioner Gillman, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve today's consent agenda.
All right, there's a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Onto item number nine, this is discussion for possible action, presentation of commendation to deputies Matt O'Brien, Matt Busquet, and Sergeant Joe Welch for their life-saving actions on June 30th, 2025.
Good morning, Commissioners, Sheriff Cullen for the record. I'm joined with Assistant Sheriff Willett, Deputy O'Brien, Deputy Busquet, and Sergeant Joe Welch. What I'm going to do is kind of paint a picture here and tell a story for just a minute, if you don't mind. It's hard to fully describe the scene of this incident. If you're not familiar with the Lynch House in Gold Hill, however, imagine yourself in an historic Victorian-style home built in the 1800s. Narrow hallways, narrow staircases, and full of personal property, including pets, chairs, couches, tables, and so on. Imagine a steep wooden staircase and porch leading into the residence and a hilly, steep terrain around the house. Now imagine the house filled with flames and smoke rapidly billowing up. On June 30th, 2025, deputies Busquet, O'Brien, and Sergeant Joe Welch showed extreme bravery and courage by entering a residence that was on fire and engulfed in smoke without hesitation or delay and removed the occupants that were in distress. Deputy Busquet was off duty and driving home at about 18:15 hours when he saw flames and smoke coming from the Lynch House at 1669 Main Street in Gold Hill, Nevada. Deputy Busquet pulled his personal truck to the side of the road and ran into the residence where he was met with smoke and heat. Deputy Busquet located the occupants, one of whom was an amputee confined to a wheelchair. Shortly thereafter, deputies O'Brien and Felipe arrived on scene, and as they began to enter the residence, deputy Felipe was met by a mother and child that had escaped from the home and were suffering smoke inhalation. He removed them and moved them over to his patrol vehicle and provided aid. Deputy O'Brien continued into the residence and joined deputy Busquet. Deputies Busquet and O'Brien were joined by Sergeant Joe Welch shortly thereafter in the rear bedroom of the home, where they worked together as a team to remove two elderly subjects that were both on oxygen and one of whom required a wheelchair. They maintained their composure as the conditions in the residence were rapidly deteriorating. Three of them, the three of them lifted the wheelchair-bound resident and carefully maneuvered him and the second occupant through the tight cluttered space to safety, mere moments before the structure became fully engulfed in smoke. The heroic actions of deputy Busquet, O'Brien, and Sergeant Joe Welch undoubtedly saved the lives of the two residents. Their courageous response came at personal risk as all three of them and the rescued individuals required treatment for smoke inhalation outside. Their actions of bravery, courage, and teamwork exemplify the highest standards of law enforcement service and reflect great credit upon themselves, the Story County Sheriff's Office, and the community they serve. It is for these reasons that I award the Life Saving Medal to each of them. They earned it that day. Deputy O'Brien, go with Matt first, or who do you want to go first? Matt? Yeah, there you go. There's your award, and here's your medal.
The medal's accompanied by a pin that they can wear on their uniform permanently.
Good job. Joe? Certificate, story of the incident. Whoops. And then your honor. Thank you. Very proud of you. All right, Commissioners, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, moving right along to item number 13, which is discussion only, no action, no public comment. These are committee and staff reports to kick things off at the sheriff's office today.
Nothing today, thank you. That was quite good.
All right, yep, definitely good news, Sheriff, thank you. How about the Fire Protection District?
Bob Reiser for the record. The probably most significant thing that we've been doing in the last couple of weeks is, last week, we had a meeting between our dispatch and Lyon County's dispatch to work on enhanced mutual aid, automatic aid into Mark Twain, just based on sometimes we have challenges getting down the canyon and the speed at which they can respond, their resources. So we basically have an automatic aid agreement in place to overlap Lyon County Mark Twain and Story County Mark Twain to expedite response, whether it's for a fire or medical emergency, anything that happens within that jurisdiction, and then for us to respond as well down into Silver City and provide automatic aid for those resources. That's something that has been kind of happening on its own, but now we have an actual written aid agreement to make sure that that happens consistently, and the dispatch centers are communicating to make sure that we're meeting each other's needs as best we can, and that's a somewhat revolutionary thing for us within those jurisdictions. So that was a very positive thing for us in the last couple of weeks.
Great. All right, thank you. Commissioner Gillman, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not, thank you.
All right, yeah, I know the folks in Mark Twain definitely appreciate that, so great, I'm working on it. Moving right along to Public Works.
Nothing to do, Sheriff. Do you want to begin?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should go. And then, you'll have to kind of squeeze it.
Sure. You and me.
Okay, one, two, three, perfect, lovely, great. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
You want to pull that undo, I think it is. Okay, great, thank you. All right, moving right along to item number 13, which is discussion only, no action, no public comment. These are committee and staff reports to kick things off at the sheriff's office today.
Nothing today, thank you. That was quite good.
All right, yep, definitely good news, Sheriff, thank you. How about the Fire Protection District?
Bob Reiser for the record. The probably most significant thing that we've been doing in the last couple of weeks is, last week, we had a meeting between our dispatch and Lyon County's dispatch to work on enhanced mutual aid, automatic aid into Mark Twain, just based on sometimes we have challenges getting down the canyon and the speed at which they can respond, their resources. So we basically have an automatic aid agreement in place to overlap Lyon County Mark Twain and Story County Mark Twain to expedite response, whether it's for a fire or medical emergency, anything that happens within that jurisdiction, and then for us to respond as well down into Silver City and provide automatic aid for those resources. That's something that has been kind of happening on its own, but now we have an actual written aid agreement to make sure that that happens consistently, and the dispatch centers are communicating to make sure that we're meeting each other's needs as best we can, and that's a somewhat revolutionary thing for us within those jurisdictions. So that was a very positive thing for us in the last couple of weeks.
Great. All right, thank you. Commissioner Gillman, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not, thank you.
All right, yeah, I know the folks in Mark Twain definitely appreciate that, so great, I'm working on it. Moving right along to Public Works.
Nothing to do, Sheriff.
All right, how about operations and projects coordinator? There's always something happening in your department, right?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mike Northam, project manager. B Street Rockery Wall Repair, bid documents are underway. Fairgrounds, bid documents also underway. We finally got a revised line extension agreement from NV Energy, so we can start scheduling that work. Station 71, today we have a pre-proposal meeting with H&amp;K Architecture and the USDA to coordinate federal funding requirements on the design contract and also begin scoping. TRI Sheriff's Office substation, project team is going to be meeting, I think on the 22nd, to review the RFQ submittals, and hopefully have a short list very quickly to two firms for follow-up interviews. And then last item is the fuel tank replacement is complete at the TRI building. Those pumps and tanks are online, and is currently underway at the Public Works building. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions, sir.
Good update, Mike, thank you. Commissioner Gillman, anything for Mike?
I do not, thank you.
All right, great news, bud, thanks. Moving right along to Planning Department.
Nothing today.
All right, thanks, Kathy. How about our admin officer?
Good morning, and Lisa Missell for the record. Just two quick updates, the property that was donated to Story County at 616 H Street closed on Friday, and in front of you, there's a survey we published yesterday on our website, and that is to get public input on the speed bumps that are in town. So hopefully everybody will have that, find it on our website, and there's some flyers in the background with that QR code on it as well.
Thank you for that update, Lisa. Commissioner Gillman, questions or comments for Lisa?
None, thank you.
All right, thank you. Too fast. Emergency Management.
Morning, Adam Wilson, Director of Emergency Management for the record. First, next week, EM will be over at the State Office of Emergency Management, helping with the Integrated Preparedness Plan for the next year. We do that by region every year across the state, and we will be in a partial EOC activation beginning Friday through Sunday next weekend for street vibrations. Tourism is expecting over 20,000 attendees at this event, so we'll put the EOC in a partial activation just for safety reasons, and at the request of the sheriff's office and tourism, we will be closing C Street from Sutton to Taylor for motorcycles only during the event. Next, on October 8th, at 10 a.m., as is a Wednesday, we will have our next local emergency planning committee meeting. This will be a big one because NDOT is sending a representative to give an update on projects out at the Tri Park and as well on the I-8 corridor project. So we encourage everybody to attend that one, that's at the government complex for Story County out at the Tri Center. The agendas are online and posted at all the community buildings. And finally, after the success of the VCH evacuation exercise and requests from the communities, we've begun planning a Lockwood evacuation exercise. We plan to hold that by the end of this year, so there'll be more information coming out. We're trying to confirm dates this week, so hopefully within the next week or two, we'll be able to get that information out to the public. Then by the end of spring, we will have a similar exercise in the Mark Twain community, and by summer, we'll hold one for Virginia City proper. The intent on our plan, our preparedness plan within the county EM was to hold these exercises quarterly over the next five years. They'll be varied from full-scale exercises, like we're doing this year, to just simple town hall meetings that are discussion-based, tabletop exercises, everything. But this year, we're starting with the full scales. So that way, we can really get that engagement, and that is all I have.
Great, thank you, Adam. Commissioner Gillman, any questions or comments for Adam?
No, thank you, Adam.
All right, yeah, appreciate it. Who's handling the VCTC, is that you?
Me. I can do it with mine, or do you want me to?
Yeah, we can just wait.
Okay.
How about our Health and Community Services Director?
Good morning, Stacy York for the record. Flu season is right around the corner, so we have six different flu shot clinics scheduled in the county. Our first one, it's a lot of dates and times, I apologize. Our first one is October 1st, 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. in the Highlands Fire Station. October 8th, 9 to 11 a.m. at the VC Senior Center. October 9th, 9 to 11 a.m. at the Lockwood Senior Community Center. October 10th, 11 to 12 at the Mark Twain Community Center. October 14th, 1 to 3 p.m. at Piper's Opera House, that's running in conjunction with our Community Resource Fair. And then October 15th, 9 to 11 a.m. at the Mark Twain Community Center. And that is it today.
Thank you for that update, Stacy. Commissioner Gillman, do you have any questions or comments for Stacy?
No, thank you.
All right, we are joined by Sherman Mitchell. You have any questions for Stacy?
I have any questions, thank you.
All right, thanks again, Stacy. How about our IT Department?
Morning, Commissioners, James Dean, IT Director. We are doing a revamp of our backup server this year. It's also going to coincide with refreshing our CAD server at the dispatch center, so total hardware replacement, server software upgrade, SQL server upgrade, so a total refresh of that system should last about seven to 10 years is our projected life on that. And then we are upgrading our LTO backup storage from version 8 to version 9, which will give us a faster restore in the event of a catastrophic data event, similar to like what the state has, we run all the same systems that they do. We have the exact same core network that they do, so we're on high alert, obviously. We actually did a mock exercise of a total destruction of our environment. We were able to restore it down at the lab at Try in less than 24 hours. Obviously, we don't have all the systems that the state does, but it's a pretty impressive turnaround time from dead in the water to back in business. So the new equipment that we're purchasing is actually going to make that even faster. That's all I have today.
Well, great news, James, I'm glad to hear it. Commissioner Gillman, questions or comments for James?
No, thank you.
All right, Vice Chairman?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yep, thank you. You shouldn't have said that on the record, because then the state's going to come after you. Way to go, James. How about Human Resources? All right, moving right along. Community Development?
Nothing today, Commissioner.
Joe, how about the PR Office?
Nothing today, I need some help.
Okay. Lee, do you have anything for us, planning commission-wise?
Nothing today, thank you.
All right. How about the DA's office? Well, it's Ann's birthday today, so I think Brian's on task. How about we just go to the County Manager's office?
Okay. All right, thank you, Commissioners, Austin Osburn for the record. Also speaking on behalf of Director Tuttle for the VCTC, he asked me to give a presentation. He was not able to make the meeting, so he just wanted to let you know that the camel races was successful. In fact, there was record sales again, so it seems like every time he discusses something, there's record sales. He wants to remind us all about street vibrations coming up. I know that he's been working with our team on coordinating all of the logistics for that. You heard the other staff reports about things that are going on in preparation for 20,000 people coming up into town, and we know what that looks like. The next thing coming up will be the October series of events that are coming up in October, so that'll be the next ramp of activities that the VCTC will be handling here in town. As far as my updates for the County Manager, just wanted to give you an update. We're on meetings with NDOT every single day almost about USA Parkway and these traffic signal matters. The Sydney traffic signal at Sydney and USA Parkway is moving forward very quickly. We really want to appreciate Switch for being very participative in that project. In fact, they're taking on almost all of it, if not all of it, so that's really great. That project is going to go up here about a week or two, probably not any longer than that. NDOT's already ordered the equipment, the temporary signals are coming, everything's going to be pretty good. And then we'll have a controlled left turn onto USA Parkway, which is an arrow that restricts everything else, which should make things a little bit smoother. On the Denmark Drive front, there's some right-of-way concerns and constraints of topography in the area. We're working with NDOT giving them maps and easements and right-of-ways and everything that's available to try to get that signal in. There could be some delays on that. I've asked NDOT if they can look at Waltham Way, USA Parkway intersection, if the Denmark one is going to have a substantial delay. They are doing that as we speak. They say the intersection's actually built very well with all the things that are required to make that work. It's a little bit close to the electric signal, which there's some traffic engineering logistics that go with that that they're trying to work around, but that probably might be end up where the next temporary signal goes until NDOT can do a permanent signal analysis for the whole stretch of the road. I do plan on bringing to this board at the next commission meeting a resolution for this board to consider that would support the maintenance and, I'll just say, keeping open of the Patrick interchange, as there has been some potential discussion of closing that, thinking that will resolve the issues. We've had very candid conversations with folks that were looking at going that direction, which was not at the NDOT team, and to say that really needs to remain open, and what we will need to do as a team here as a county, if that were to be proposed, to be closed again, and we are prepared as a team to respond to that. So I don't think that's going to be a situation, but I will ask this board to look at a resolution to support keeping that open. That is all I have for this time.
All right, thank you, Austin. Commissioner Gillman?
No, thank you.
All right, Vice Chairman, any questions, comments?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you again for that update, Austin. We're going to bounce back to the DA's office. You guys have anything for us today, Brian?
No update, my apologies, my spacebar unmuted was apparently in effect during that last discussion. No update was made.
All right, thank you very much. How about the Court Treasurer's Office?
Morning, gentlemen, Mark Allen for the record. On September 5th, all our voting equipment recently received an upgrade to a new version and security, upgrade per the Secretary of State's mandate. October 6th through the 10th, we'll be having another mock election, where 16 counties will test the integration with Clark County in the total vote system in E-Pulse. And then the October 21st Board of Commissioners meeting will be at an alternate location due to a hearing in the courtroom, and arrangements are being made, and we'll let you know.
Thank you for that update, Mark. Commissioner Gillman, questions or comments?
No, thank you.
All right, Vice Chairman?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you again, Mark. Is there anybody here that I forgot to call on for an update? All right, thank you, everybody, appreciate the good news that seems to always be happening in Story County. Let's move right along to our next item on the agenda, which is, excuse me, one sec. We're on to board comment. Off to my left, Commissioner Gillman, do you have anything for us today?
No, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
I just want to apologize for being late, having the man over. Appreciate you letting me, letting me tune in.
For sure. Glad to have you with us. I do just want to take a moment, I know that it is a sensitive subject, but as far as I'm concerned, I do just want to take a moment to remember Charlie Kirk and his family right now. I know a lot of people pass away, but, you know, as an immigrant to this country, I came here because of all the great things in this country and what we have to offer, and being able to speak my mind with people that might not agree with me is something that I do hold true to my heart. So if we could just have a moment of silence for Charlie Kirk, please, I would appreciate Thank you. Moving along, we are going to move on to recess to convene as the Story County Liquid Licensing Board, and that brings us to item number 16, which is discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval of the first reading for the on-sale liquor license. Applicant is Jennifer Stoops of Matty's Place LLC at 66 North C Street, Virginia City, Nevada.
Deputy Frank Valdez for the record, good morning. After further review and an update of the applicant's previous application, I was able to find no disqualifiers. I have nothing negative, no negative information, unless there are any questions, I have no further.
All right, well, thank you, sir. Commissioner Gillman, questions, comments?
I have none, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
No, thank you.
Sheriff?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, is there any public comment regarding this item? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman Mitchell, you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm happy to. I have, Commissioner Mitchell, moved to approve the first reading for on-sale liquor license out against Jennifer Stoops, Matty's Place LLC, 66 North C Street, Virginia City, Nevada.
Second. There's a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you for that, Jason. Have fun down there.
Oh, yeah.
Onto item number 19, which is to recess to convene as the Story County Board of County Commissioners, bringing this to item number 20, which is discussion for possible action, consideration and possible approval of an amendment to the inter-local contract between public agencies, Nevada Health Authority, Department of Human Services Division, and Social Services, and Story County. Stacy?
Good morning, Stacy York for the record. This amendment is to change the name of the public entity, number one, from Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Healthcare Financing and Policy, to something shorter, Nevada Health Authority. And Nevada Medicaid and Public Entity, number two, from Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Welfare and Supportive Services, to Department of Human Services, Division of Social Services. This is per the 83rd Legislative Session, Senate Bill 50. Division of Welfare and Supportive Services, to Department of Human Services, Division of Social Services. This is per the 83rd Legislative Session, Senate Bill 494, which was effective July 1, 2025. The entity name changes will be effective throughout this entire contract and all its attachments.
All right. Thank you, Stacy. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not. Thank you.
Vice Chairman?
I'm good, Gilman. Thank you.
All right. How about any public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I am. I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to approve the amendment to the interim contract.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Stacy. On to item number 21, discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval of special use permit 2025-051. The applicant requests a special use permit to construct two single-circuit line segments, each approximately three miles in length, for an overall length of six miles. Kathy?
Thank you. So Kathy Campbell for the record. So yes, this was a request from the applicant to construct their transmission corridor to their property, industrial zone properties. These are located at the state line of Story County and Lyon County. The Planning Commission heard this request at their September 4th meeting and unanimously approved the recommendation for approval. The special use permit addresses the land use of the transmission corridor and the additional height for the poles themselves. This site itself is outside of our map transmission corridors in our master plan. If this is approved, we will be updating the maps at some point, and this would be included at that time.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments on this item?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
I don't have any. Thank you.
Is there any public comment? All right. Kathy, do you mind reading the findings?
Sure. And probably I should also mention that there were no public comments that we received, either through email or written comments, or at the meeting at the Planning Commission. So the finding's a fact for a motion for approval. This approval is for special use permit 2025-051 to construct two single-circuit line segments, each approximately three miles in length, for an overall length of six miles, 345 KV power line outside of an existing designated transmission corridor. The special use permit addresses the transmission corridor land use and the additional height for poles located on landzone forestry and landzone heavy industrial. The proposal will include approximately 39 poles with the proposed heights ranging from approximately 77 feet to 165 feet based on the topography of the pole location. Proposed transmission lines subject to the special use permit will be located within APN 004-201-13, APN 004-181-05, APN 004-181-03, APN 004-181-08, and APN 004-181-13, McCarran, Story County, Nevada.
Thank you, Kathy.
The, oh, I'm not, I'm sorry.
I was helping you through halfway.
Okay. This special use permit conforms to the 2024 Story County Master Plan for the heavy industrial and transition from resources to industrial designated area in which the subject property is located. A discussion supporting this finding for the special use permit is provided in Section 2. D of the staff report, and contents thereof cited in an approval of the special use permit. Special use permit complies with the general purpose, goals, objectives, and standards of the county master plan, zoning ordinance, and any other plan, program, map, or ordinance adopted or under consideration pursuant to the official notice by the county. The proposal location, size, height, operations, and other significant features will be compatible with and will not cause substantial negative impact on adjacent land uses, or will perform a function or provide a service that is essential to the surrounding land uses, community, and neighborhood. Special use permit will result in no substantial or undue adverse effect on adjacent property, the character of the neighborhood, traffic conditions, parking, public improvements, public sites or right-of-way, or other matters affecting the public health, safety, and general welfare, either as they now exist, or as they may in the future be developed as a result of the implementation of the provisions and policies of the county master plan. This title and any other plans, program, map, or ordinance adopted or under consideration pursuant to an official notice by the county or other governmental agency having jurisdiction to guide growth and development. The proposed use in the proposed area will be adequately served by and will impose no undue burden on any of the improvements, facilities, utilities, or services provided by the county or other governmental agency having jurisdiction in the county. The special use permit with the recommended conditions of approval complies with the requirements of Chapter 17.03.150, special use permit, Chapter 17.32 F Forestry, Chapter 17.35 I-2 Heavy Industrial, and Chapter 17.1 to general provisions of the Story County Code. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. With that, Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I am. Thank you. In accordance with the recommendation by the Planning Commission staff, the finding facts under Section 3A of this report is read into the record by county staff and other findings deemed appropriate by the Board of County Commissioners. In compliance with the conditions of approval, I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to approve special use permit 2025-051 to construct two single-circuit line segments, each approximately three miles in length, for an overall length of six miles, 345 KV power line outside of an existing designated transmission corridor. The special use permit addresses the transmission corridor land use and the additional height for poles located on landzone forestry and landzone heavy industrial. The proposal will include approximately 39 poles with the proposed heights ranging from approximately 77 feet to 165 feet based on the topography of the pole location. The proposed transmission lines subject to this special use permit will be located within APN 004-201-13, APN 004-181-05, APN 004-181-03, APN 004-181-08, and APN 004-181-131, McCarran, Story County, Nevada.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kathy. Moving on to item number 22. This is discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval for special use permit 2025-052. Kathy?
Thank you. So this is a request for a sign located on this property that we were just talking about. It's located at the county line between Story County and Lyon County. The sign itself will be located at the property line, and because there's no existing development on that property, and because they're proposing the sign to be 16 feet in height, it requires a special use permit for the sign. The sign does not meet the definition in our code of what a billboard is. They are like 128 square feet, and its setback from the edge of pavement of USA Parkway at the property line is approximately 180 feet right in that location. So this is setback quite a way, and that's why the sign is actually bigger and higher than what it typically would be. This was heard at the Planning Commission on September 4th, and they unanimously recommended approval. There were no comments received, either in writing to the planning department or at the Planning Commission meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
No, I have a question.
All right. How about public comment? Not seeing any. Kathy, would you care to read the findings?
Sure. The finding's a fact for a motion of approval. This approval is for a special use permit 2025-052 to construct a freestanding non-illuminated sign located on the applicant's property on currently vacant heavy industrial zone land. Proposed sign is approximately 128 square feet in the area and approximately 16 feet in height. The sign will consist of digitally printed vinyl. The property is located at 8990 USA Parkway, McCarran, Story County, Nevada, assessor's parcel number APN 004-171-25. The proposed project complies with the general purpose, goals, objectives, and standards of the county master plan. This title and any other plan, program, map, or ordinance adopted or under consideration pursuant to an official notice by the county. The proposal location, size, operations, and other significant features will be compatible with and will not cause substantial negative impact on adjacent land uses, or will perform a function or provide a service that is essential to the surrounding land uses, community, and neighborhood. The proposed project will result in no substantial or undue adverse effect on adjacent property, the character of the neighborhood, traffic conditions, parking, public improvements, public sites or rights of way, or other matters affecting the public health, safety, and general welfare, either as they now exist or as they may in the future be developed as a result of the implementation of the provisions and policy of the county master plan. This title and any other plans, program, map, or ordinance adopted or under consideration pursuant to an official notice by the county or other governmental agency having jurisdiction to guide growth and development. The proposed use in the proposed area will be adequately served by and will impose no undue burden on any of the improvements, facilities, utilities, or services provided in the county or other governmental agency having jurisdiction in the county. The special use permit conforms to the 2024 Story County Master Plan for the McCarran planning area in which the subject property is located. A discussion supporting this finding is provided in Section 2. C of the staff report, and the contents thereof are cited in an approval of this special use permit. The conditions under the special use permit do not conflict with the minimum requirements of Story County Code, Section 17.03.150, special use permit, and 17.84 signs and billboards. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I am. In accordance with the recommendation by the Planning Commission staff, the finding of fact in Section 3A of this report is read into the record by the county staff and other findings deemed appropriate by the Board of County Commissioners. In compliance with the conditions of approval, I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to approve special use permit 2025-052 to construct a freestanding non-illuminated sign located on the applicant's property on currently vacant heavy industrial zone land. The proposed sign is approximately 128 square feet in an area approximately 16 feet in height. The sign will consist of digitally printed vinyl. The property is located at 8990 USA Parkway, McCarran, Story County, Nevada, assessor's parcel number APN 004-171-25.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kathy. Moving on to item number 23, discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval of the purchase of an unbudgeted air conditioner in the amount of $12,100 from Fleet Heating and Air Conditioning and Electrical, or Air and Electrical Work in the amount of, let me just start that over. Consideration and possible approval of the purchase of an unbudgeted air conditioner in the amount of $12,100 from Fleet Heating and Air and Electrical Work in the amount of $2,776 from Highland Electric and Lighting. James?
Hello, again Commissioners. James Dean, IT Director. So we temperature monitor all of our core data centers here at the courthouse, down at Troy, and also the dispatch data center, and we are trending at a little bit above 85 degrees, which is not optimal for the million-plus dollars in computer equipment in that vault. We also intend to add a brand-new backup server, like I mentioned during my staff report, a tape drive, and then in the near future, potentially more consoles. So this is to address the additional heat load that's already present, and then also provide for some future expansion with additional equipment.
All right. Thank you, James. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to approve the purchase of an unbudgeted air conditioner for the dispatch center in the amount of $12,100 from Fleet Heating and Air Conditioning and Electrical Work in the amount of $2,776 from Highland Electric and Lighting.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, James.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Moving on to item number 24, discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval for the county clerk and treasurer to participate in the Nevada statewide ballot contract for the 2026 election cycle as arranged by Nevada Secretary of State. Mark?
Hello, again, gentlemen. Mark Allen for the record. Recently, Secretary of State's Office arranged a statewide ballot contract with ProVote Solutions. Currently, there are three counties using him, with the rest of the counties joining. Our current print vendor for the 2024 election cycle, Ford Orange Press, provided outstanding results. However, if we continue to use Ford Orange Press, we won't be reimbursed the full amount as in the previous elections that the Secretary of State has provided us. So recommend that we go with the ProVote Solutions, because if we do, then the Secretary of State's Office will pay everything out, and we won't have anything out of pocket.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
All right. How about public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I am. I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to approve the county clerk and treasurer participation in the Nevada statewide ballot contract for the 2026 election cycle as arranged by the Nevada Secretary of State.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 25, discussion for possible action. Presentation, discussion, and consideration directing staff regarding update to the Story County strategic plan for fiscal year '25 through '26. This is an ongoing strategic plan discussion. County Manager?
All right. Thank you. Commissioners Austin Osborn for the record. So this is a continuation of our discussion from the last meeting, and at this point, I still don't have any recommended action. I put this on the agenda for the board to review and know that there's some progress being made and that some changes are made to the strategic plan per the request at the last meeting. And I want to let you know that we're continuing to work as a team on the inside on our department's strategic plans, as well as the county-wide strategic plan. And I'm going to believe that there's going to be a few more suggestions that we would like to bring to the board based on those conversations that might affect what you ultimately want to approve with some of these perspectives and objectives. So at this point, I would like to just provide this to you for comment today, as well as the public, and then to keep the thing published until probably a month or so from now, when we're ready to come back to you with some more recommendations and see what you think. And then I think at that point, we'll ultimately have a countywide strategic plan that's approved by this board, and then we can start sharpening the pencils with our department heads and elected officials.
Great. Thank you for that, Austin.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments about this item?
I do not. Thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Just one comment, that is, I'm very supportive of the simplification and clarity on wording proposed, as I reviewed the draft. And so, yeah, I like the direction that's going. Have any other specific recommendations at this time?
Great. Thank you. I do too support the simplification. That's obviously going to be in our best interest. Is there any public comment at this time? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I can help you with a motion if you want to know what's being...
Sure.
...what we have. Commissioner Mitchell, are you okay with that?
Please go ahead.
Okay. I think the motion that you have in front of you kind of has some action behind it. I think you did make a point in making the documentation simple. You do like the implementation of the, what you wanted at the last meeting. And then I think a motion that could say also to continue directing staff to, you know, tune this up and work together as a team, and then come back to this board within the next 30 to 60 days with a final recommendation.
All right. That works for me, Austin. Are you comfortable with that, Vice Chairman?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
All right.
I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to accept the suggested edits and updates by staff and to further instruct them to continue to fine-tune those edits and bring them back for further consideration within the next 30 to 60 days.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Austin.
Moving on to item number 26, discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval of business-sized second readings A through M. Commissioner Gilman, questions or comments about that?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. How about public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I move to approve the second reading of business licenses listed under item 26 as A through M.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. On to item number 27 is the second and final time for public comment during this meeting. Is there any public comment in the courtroom today? Not seeing any. That brings us to item number 28, adjournment of all active and recess boards on the agenda. I think this might be a record. It is 10:52. This meeting is adjourned. That is a record, right?
There was a seventeen-minute period that happened.
How many agenda items? Three.